Hello, good afternoon everybody. Welcome to Sheffield Town Hall. My name's Julie Grokot and I will be chairing this meeting of our governance committee this afternoon. Before we start proceedings, we'll go around the room and introduce first of all members. And I'm really sorry councillor Gilligan, you seem to be all on your own over there. That's not very good.
Hello, I'm councillor Christine Gilligan from Helsburgh Ward.
I have in Mary from Crookston Crossfield Ward.
Councillor Sholad Meyer Richards from Manor Ward.
I'm councillor Dorndale from Shire Green and Brightside Ward.
Garsa Mike Weaver from West Echolsfield.
Councillor Sue Alston from Fulwood.
And we also have a number of officers present this afternoon. We'll start over on my left. Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
I'm Alexander Pollack, I'm Assistant Director for Governance.
Jid Belkam, Secretary.
Hi, I'm Laurie Brennan, I'm Head of Policy and Partnerships.
Thank you, you're both very welcome. Can I remind members about the importance of social distancing and if we're moving about in the chamber, wearing of masks at all time unless you have an exemption, please. Can I also request if you haven't already done so that you put mobile phones and other such technological devices onto silent so that they don't disturb meetings? And for information, there is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation from Town Hall, please follow the staff. As I'm sure you're all aware, the assembly point is in Tudor Square. The second item on our agenda is apologies from absence. I understand so far we have apologies from councillor Penny Baker, Mark Jones and Caltoon Rivers. Do we have any others, Jay? No. Brilliant. And I'm not aware of any items under item three where we need to exclude the public or the press? And item four, we have declarations of interest. Can I ask if any members have any declarations of interest to make? If you could notify us whether they are personal or pecuniary and which item on the agenda they refer to, please. Thank you. Item five is minutes of the previous meeting. Can I ask, are members happy to approve the minutes as a correct record for our meeting on the 20th of September? Oh, Alex, yes.
There is an update to give, I think, on the principles set out on page 13 and 14 of your pack. For two reasons. Firstly, that in this fast-moving project, we've done quite a lot of work with stakeholders and residents just over the last week on these. And I think it's important, we note that we've got lots of input for the committee, ready to help them continue to think about how to develop those. So although these are being agreed as a record of where you were at last time you met, I just thought it would be worth noting for the benefit of anyone who was at those sessions and is also watching this, that they're still in development and we've got lots more to talk to members about those principles. The second thing is that amongst the changes that you made last time you met, you asked us to go away and come up with some wording for one of them. I think it's number 16 on page 14, which we were asked to agree in consultation with the Chair and Vice-Chair. So we've done some wording that we think reflects what we were asked to do, but you haven't seen that before today in this set of minutes. And it was agreed by Julie before, you're seeing it today.
We're all happy with that. Thank you. Item six is public questions and petitions. I'm not aware that we have any, so that's item six done. So we're down to item seven, which is the approach to designing a committee system, which starts at page 17 in your pack. And Alex, you're leading on this one for us, please, thank you.
Don't worry, last time it really was me every single item, but this time Laurie's going to lead the item after this one, so you don't have as much of my voice as you did last time. But yes, I'm going to take this item. The purpose of this item, as you can see, set out on page 17 of your pack on the front page of the report, is threefold. First of all, a bit of an update, and if you forgive me, I'd like to take a few minutes to kind of put in words some of the key things we've been doing, not least because some of that has continued to move since we wrote this report. Secondly, we have put more meat on the bones of the approach you agreed in September. You agreed to a high-level idea of something happening before Christmas that was about the governance structure first and then something after Christmas that led to a greater focus on ways of working. And you gave us a green light to start talking to stakeholders and residents now about some various bits and pieces. We've put more detail into that in terms of specific timescales, when we might go to council and so on, and that's set out in this report. I'll talk to you about it in a second, just to give you an overview. And then, thirdly, in the appendix to this report is what we've called a framework, which since it's already in the public domain, because it was published five days ago, well actually, five working days ago I should say, we've already been using this as the basis for discussions with stakeholders and the public. But we've been doing that on the basis that it was not yet something that was agreed or condoned by this committee. So this is your opportunity to say, next time you use that, we'd rather you tweaked it this way or that way, and whether or not this is a useful idea for a way to kind of begin to build our conversations about the future governance model for the council. So I'm going to do a little bit more detail on those three things, and I'm happy to be steered by you, Chair, as to whether you want me to pause after each of those areas for kind of a question to the discussion, or if you'd like me to brief on the whole thing first, I don't mind. Perhaps to see how many people want to jump in with their hands in the air and then stop me if you want to stop me, does that sound okay?
I'm tempted to go with pausing and taking questions. That'll give you a break and we can just focus on each section as we get to it, if that's okay.
Okay, lovely.
We'll see how that works. Subject to chair.
Subject to chairs, that's fine. Always subject to discretion of the Chair. So in terms of things that we've been up to since last time we met, well, section 2.2 of the report sets most of this stuff out. And I'm not going to read the report to you, I'm going to let you soak that up, I'm sure members in the room will already have done so. What I want to add to this in particular is that since we wrote this report, we've held two engagement events. You gave us a green light in September to go and start speaking to the group of stakeholders who we were already aware of, and to begin to expand that group as best we could, under our own steam and with the support of the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny, to just begin these conversations, on the understanding that that would be imperfect, but we'd try and get better at it as we went along, but it would get us moving. So what I've not been able to give you here is an update on what happened in those sessions, and where they were, and who was there, and that kind of thing. So I'd like to just add that verbally to what you have in front of you. What I can't do is give you all the output from all of that. The most recent of them was last night, we finished at half past seven, so we haven't finished writing it all up. And so you will see that output, committee members, you'll see it very soon, and over the coming weeks, as we work our way towards the next committee meeting, you'll have plenty of time with the outputs from that and from the future sessions that will be running. But just quickly, what they were is an in-person event at St Mary's Church on Friday morning, this last Friday morning, at which we had, I think, around 25 or 30 stakeholders and members of the public who came along. We ran a series of workshops after initial presentation, focused around three areas. The first was, as you asked us to in your September meeting, a discussion about these draft design principles, to ask for input into whether there's anything missing, whether they feel like they're worded usefully, or if there's anything that people had objections to or that they'd like to see given a different level of emphasis. And because that was your instruction to us in September, we, two out of the four groups, were looking at that. The next one was that we had a group who were looking at, actually, how do we do what we're doing now, are you engaging with people better, to help us get it better and better between now, especially in Christmas, when, as you know, Involve start to do his piece of work with us, that will be somewhat different in character. And again, some really good conversations there about how people would like to see us doing that, and to get more voices in the room, and to be more effective at it. And then the third area was, as I mentioned a moment ago, to put this draft framework, governance framework, in front of them, and say, let's have a discussion about some bits of this, so that we can start to feed your voices into the process. But what we said is, very early days on this, we're mostly just wetting your appetite for some more detailed conversations over the coming weeks and months. I'd like to give you just an idea of the sorts of things that we've heard at these sessions. Like I say, I cannot attempt to recreate the vibe in the room or the detail of what we heard. But the things to say are, I think, first of all, I'm really impressed at the depth of experience and interest that Sheffield City Council is lucky enough to have amongst the kinds of people who could give up a Friday morning or a Tuesday evening to come and talk about governance. I can't express to you how unusual that is. Normally, it's just me and my boss and maybe one or two councillors who care, let alone have pre-existing knowledge about this sort of thing when we're doing it. So it's just so exciting to have people from the university and from all walks of life with specialist expertise and views, and interested in contributing. So I think that's just such an asset for you as a committee, and really look forward to bringing their feedback to you. I'm pleased to say I didn't get the feeling that any particular group or groups were dominating the discussion. I think there was lots of opportunity for anyone from any different kind of background or interests to have their say, and we've had a lot of input from lots of different perspectives. It's definitely true to say that there is not a consensus amongst what we heard, we've got lots of views that are directionally opposed to each other, which gives us a really interesting kind of landscape to work inside. On the structure conversation, on the governance, on the framework here that we've put forward, I think it's fair to say we've got some suggestions coming forward that probably don't fit inside the current legal framework of what's possible, but that are really interesting, kind of inspiring ideas, and that you might want to think about how you, I don't know, consider that that's a nice idea, we'd like to lobby for it, or something like that, sorry? Such as, introducing a role for a directly elected individual who is not a councillor, who would have decision-making authority at the Town Hall, which is a really interesting idea, and you might have any number of reasons why you might wish for that. At the moment, it doesn't fit inside the legislative framework that local councils work inside, but it'd be interesting to see, well, what's the reason behind a suggestion like that? What's the intended goal on, is there a way to address that? Lots of other ideas were eminently workable, such as please have this many committees, we think you should have three, we think you should have six. And there are lots in between that are more to do with how the things should operate, and what kind of cultural or political goals that might help the council to land. On, what I should say is, I was amazed at the level of, I'll say again, the level of detail and capability of the people who are ready to talk to you about this, which is such an asset. On the design principles that we put forward, again, real depth, strength of feeling, I think there's lots more to do with you on those design principles based on what we've heard, and I'm looking forward to bringing some of those options to you again. There's been a lot said in these two sessions about the purpose of change being more to do with culture and tone and the feel of democracy in Sheffield, and less about whether there's four committees or six. And I think quite a lot of people who we spoke to were feeling like those principles were one of the ways to express that, and so we've got some interesting things to bring back to you on that front. And in terms of the way that we do engagement, how we do that well going forward, we've heard lots on this front too, some good things. People saying, these sessions feel like they're working well for what they are, and so that's a positive bit of feedback, and that they're not just an information session where you're talking at us, people saying, glad we've got a chance to input. But also, I think we heard some quite strong views about us not having done enough yet to publicise what we were doing with these two events, which I think we as officers absolutely take on board, that we did them very quickly and with the usual names as a sort of a starting point, but we've got a lot to do to get better at that. And some other specific feedback around, you know, how we involve particular groups like businesses or the VCS, to make sure we're hearing their voices. So we've committed to those individuals who came to us to, first of all, keep running those events, as per elsewhere in this report, and to feed back to them and to you everything that we've heard from them so far. So when I get on to the next section of this report, I'll give you a bit of a feel for how you might expect to see that input. But shall I pause there on an update of what we've done so far, in order for any comments on either what's written in point 2.2 or the public engagement work we've done so far?
Thank you, Chair. I was just having a look at the committee system discussion framework, and if this is what, I just have a couple of questions on this, mainly one. Under the themed committees, it sets out a number already between three and 10. Why did it do that? Where did that information come from? And do you not feel that if you're presenting that to members at public, they'll feel that that is the restraints in which we're going after working, rather than being more open to considering actual requirements for the level of work that needs to be done?
I'd like to pick that up, but I'd like to pick it up after I've briefed on that part of the paper, is that okay?
Just one more question then regarding the workshops. How do you, are you collating information about whereabouts in the city people are coming from to your workshops, mindful of where they are? So one was at St Mary's, and where was the other one?
It was online.
Online, so are they going to be moved across the city into different areas so as that people from all over the city can engage? Or are they, I'm just mindful that maybe people in the north-east won't have been over to come and have a chat with you about that, or maybe in the east of the city?
So the short answer is, no, I don't think so. We know some things about the backgrounds of the individuals who've come, but we haven't made an effort to kind of put together a profile of those individuals yet. That's a bit of what I was saying about us getting on with something that's a bit quick and dirty right now. The further down the line we get, I think the more you're going to see that kind of activity, and when you hear later about, especially the post-Christmas activity, I think there's going to be a much heavier emphasis on making sure we're covering off these kinds of things to make sure we've got a balanced input.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just add to that, I think it's a really valid point, and I think it's something that we do need to do so that we are satisfied that the engagement has been across the whole of the city and we have listened to our voices, so thanks for raising that. Councillor Richard?
It was very similar, actually, because I think St Mary's is actually much more available to some parts of the city, and I just was wondering whether Crystal Peaks, Stockbridge, Stanington were also on the list of places. Those are our extreme places, aren't they, where people might also want to be consulted with? I did like the idea of the one individual directly elected to make decisions, because I thought we had 84 of them already.
So perhaps the only thing to add at this point about the geography is, in this report, we spell out a bit more that we're intending fortnightly sessions along the lines of the ones that we've been running, and there is absolutely an intention that the ones which are in person will move around the area covered by Sheffield City Council, although I don't imagine we'll be able to hold one in every ward or anything like that.
Follows on from what Dale and, sorry, Don and councillor Richard said. Were the people that attended primarily people from its our city or people who supported the committee system, did they declare that interest? And are we going to ensure that we get people to come along to these engagement consultations who didn't vote for the committee system? Because to me, it's a bit like Brexit, you know, if you've got it, great, and for those of us who didn't vote for it, you know, we do want to say what goes on and how Brexit is going to develop. So equally, though it's small for I compared to Brexit, we do need to capture those people who did not vote for our committee system, didn't see any merit in it, so I think we just need to make sure we do that. And I think it's interesting that people couldn't come to a consensus, I think that people couldn't come to a consensus about what a committee system might look like, and everyone had a different view, and I think that reflects what we might be feeling here in this chamber today. Which we're going to work out, and that's, so I'm not worried, but we are going to work it out, yeah.
So on the first point, yes, its our city did attend both sessions, but as I mentioned earlier, I absolutely didn't feel that any group, whether it was its our city or any of the other campaign groups in the city, in any way inappropriately dominated or anything like that, no. I think it's amazing, so what I haven't mentioned is the number of people who've attended. I think I said there were 25 or the public at the in-person one. Last night, we had around 50 on the online one, and no, I can, I sense that we had a real spread of interests and perspectives. I could tell that some people who were there either had been or currently were councillors, either at other authorities or historically here or parishes. I could tell that some of those people either had been or currently are officers. I could tell that many of them were neither, all sorts of backgrounds. So no, I didn't feel that there was anything like that going on. And should just be clear, if I did say that they couldn't come to a consensus, then I didn't mean to, what I would say is that I haven't heard a consensus emerge, but we haven't made any attempt to facilitate such a thing. We'd just have heard the breadth of kind of input.
Yeah, no, well, that's fine, I mean, I'm not expecting that people would, one would emerge straight away at all, and people, but you know, if you get, it shows how difficult it is to reach a conclusion that everybody's really, really happy with, because people will have different views. But I think it is important we capture the views of people who didn't vote for a committee system, because they've got very valid reasons for not doing. And they want to make sure that, you know, going forward, we have a system that is going to be very effective for the city. Indeed, Mary, yeah, good point. I think Laurie just wanted to come in on this point before I let councillor move in.
Thank you. Just to reassure you, and obviously it's a little unfair because Alex is relatively new to the city and I've been here a little while now, I've been involved in both the events on Friday and last night as well, and to be quite frank, I was quite pleased and reassured that the breadth of the kind of involvement we got, and just particularly because on the Friday at the physical event, as we were setting up at the beginning, I had a chance to just sit and chat to some of the people in the room, and they weren't people I've usually seen at city council meetings historically. People who were NHS workers, somebody who just was interested in a particular issue in their neighbourhood, one of our basic quality commissioners was there. So I think, yeah, it was a good spread. And last night, similarly, yes, its our city had some presence, but not domineering in terms of the conversations, and also, you know, new people, young people there, there were people who had just moved to Sheffield and were quite interested in what was going on. So I think actually, what we'll probably see is this will snowball as we move forward, it's been relatively quick, and I think the feedback from the citizens about making this more visible was critical. The second bit about us going to them, so I think it's the point you've just raised, councillor Dale and councillor Richard's raised about where communities exist in Sheffield and not just letting people come to us, not setting up events at a city centre-based, we've definitely built that into the programme. But also, I think there's a job for us and maybe the committee itself maybe to kind of go out and talk to some of our key groups as well. So on Friday, I had a good conversation with somebody from Sheffield Young Carers, for example, and offered myself to go and talk to that group about what's happening and actually how they can get a voice in this. So yeah, it was genuinely enthusing, I think it'll just build and get better.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased that so many people are starting to engage with it. Some obviously have had an interest in it already and are re-engaging with the process. But the area that I'm extremely concerned about, and I think we should up the game a little bit on that area, is around the business community, the large employers, small and medium-sized businesses in Sheffield, because they have a huge impact on what we do and what we deal with. But they don't seem to be wanting to engage as easily, because I've had quite a number of conversations with the business community in my normal sort of day events. And when I mention the community, sorry, committee system to them, it could be the community system, but committee system to them, they just feel completely, well, it doesn't affect us, and anything the local authority does doesn't really affect us. So I think that there is an area there, which is a vast area, which employs thousands of thousands of people, and we, I think we ought to make an extra effort to actually engage with these people, and not with the normal suspects, which is, we've got the organisations like the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, et cetera, which inevitably will engage anyway. But if I may be bold enough to suggest that maybe we target some of the large employers and businesses and ask them to join in, at least we've made the effort to reach out to them. Whether they choose to engage with us or not, that will remain to be seen, but at least we've made that effort. And I'm sure within our systems, we do have a list of all the large businesses, and for that matter, medium and small-sized businesses. And if we can get some sort of letter out to them or some sort of communication to them, I know they've not engaged with us and it may be a little bit unfair to other sectors of the community, but I think that is a very fundamental sector for this community, and engagement from them really early on would probably be advantageous to the council in moving forward. So that's my suggestion, Chair, thank you.
I think it's an extremely sensible one, and I think we need to take it as an action from this meeting to look at how we do some bespoke engagement with the business community. And I think we need to make sure that that's not just city centre-focused, that we look at our district centres as well, which I know are smaller businesses, but I think, you know, they also will have quite an important voice to throw, you know, to throw into the mix and help steer us to some sensible solutions as we move forward, so we'll definitely take that as an action, thank you. Councillor Richards?
Thank you, Chair. At the risk of being a bit top-down, what's the name of the group that David Blunkett chairs? And, sorry? Right. I think that they might be due a visit from both you and Alex, if they haven't been already, to talk about this, because we want them to be looking and disseminating from there as well, because they have, that's where sort of the main leaders of the different parts of the city meet up. And I know we want to sort of talk to real people as well, but I think it's important we don't miss them out, particularly if we can persuade the universities to come and give us some help with any of the research and things that we may need to do.
Another excellent action, thank you. Are you any more on this section? Are you ready to carry on, Alex? Thank you. Sorry, councillor David, sorry, apologies.
Might be a bit too in order to discuss some of the discussion framework, is this the right point, or do you want to take it further down?
I was only going to come back on the Sheffield City Partnership point, I think that's absolutely right, and I'll take that away as an action, and I'll raise that with David as well. I think there's also ensuring we use some of the sector fora that exist as well, so in the VCF sector, some of the kind of convenient groups happen through those sectors, making sure we cascade some of the messaging and also create opportunities for all those organisations to have a conversation with us in whatever fora that fits really. And that, to some extent, applies to business as well, but I think we've been cautious about not wanting to convince something bespoke for business to make sure it's something they could genuinely feel involved and engaged in, and that's in my paper a bit later on, but it's the right thing as well.
Sorry, Chair, if I can just sneak in, sorry, Alex, I know you're desperate to get on. It was just that I understand that at the meeting last Friday, I think Matt Flinders was their politics professor, and he's got loads of experience of doing citizen juries and things like that, and I think we just ought to nab that sort of talent that we've got in the city and use it, because aren't we lucky to have those sorts of people?
Okay, so on to the sort of second purpose of this report, which also relates to recommendation two, where we're asking for your agreement that this be used, well, I should say, continue to be used, subject to any changes you wish to make, to support our kind of ongoing development of the actual governance model. So again, without wanting to read out the report to you, there's some key things I want to just make absolutely clear about what is in appendix A, and in doing so, I'll try and answer the question that councillor Dale asked me sensibly a moment ago. So first of all, in September, the committee endorsed an approach which, I'm sorry, I know it's a jargon-y word, but an iterative approach, one where we knew that we would need to be putting things out there despite not yet having heard enough for us to feel confident that it's the right thing yet, in order that what we've put out there can attract comments and input and... and then we can get better and so on. So we needed to start with something. So this is, this is an attempt to put something, something out there so that we have something on the table when we're having discussions amongst ourselves and out there in the community and with other stakeholders. So there's not just a big blank yawning space waiting to be filled with a governance model please. But I have taken pains in this report to say this is not a proposed model. It may well be that none of the, sorry, that some of the bits of this framework are set out, which don't need to exist, won't exist. And some, and I've said, many of the constraints on there are artificial. By which I mean, for example, where we've said between three and 10 committees, it doesn't need to say that. But the idea is to give people an idea that, as I think we sort of discussed in our last meeting, we're not talking 100 committees. And we're also not talking one committee that's just a cabinet. So it was just trying to put some kind of realistic framework. And when I say realistic, the way I put this at the engagement events over the last couple of days was to say, this is probably a fairly typical looking sort of diagram. You know, it's reasonably typical for the way that authorities that have gone, gone to becoming committee systems recently have ended up organising themselves. And as I've, as I've said at point 3.3, that, that means that it's not yet been made into something that is necessarily suitable for Sheffield. And the whole question is, what would make this suitable for Sheffield? What is, Sheffield is a unique place in all sorts of ways. So what will need to be unique about your governance model in order to reflect that? So this is not intended to, to draw too many lines around that future. However, I must say, some of what's on here is there because it's, that's the legal requirement. There will be a full council because there is one, you know, that's not up for grabs. We can't influence some things, you know, political proportionality is, is more or less a given and, and things like that. So we're trying, we've tried to give some indication on the, on the document about which bits are more and less up for grabs. But we haven't yet. And that's led to some really interesting open discussions. And one of the bits of feedback we already had at the public event over the last couple of days was perhaps we already need to start making it clear which parts are more changeable and which parts are less changeable based on the legal framework. And then further down the line, as, as we've started to build this into a kind of what's looking more like a Sheffield model, you might say some parts are more settled than others based on members' decisions that they're making along the way. But that's further down the line. So yeah, if you like, I can talk you through the, the models here, the framework and kind of how we envisage how we're using this. But I think that would take more time than we need. And there will be an opportunity for me to brief councillors, and I have already a little bit, because I've been using this when I've been speaking to the political groups about this, to brief all members on this subject. I've been putting this in front of councillors in those settings. The Green Group, incidentally, is the only group I've not yet been able to speak to due to a scheduling matter. But I'll speak to them soon, I'm sure. So, so I'm not, I don't intend to go through it. But if anyone wants to ask me about any of the specific parts of the framework we put on here, or why we're using that wording, I'd be more than happy to answer. As long as we start with the acceptance that this is intended to be a draft for discussion and not in any way a proposal that I or anyone else are wedded to.
Councillor Avery?
Thanks, Chair. I've had time to reflect on the framework and the content. And there's a few key things come out. I've arrived at a position where I've said, well, in terms of process, are there some things that exist now that we would not want to lose? And have we lost it in this framework? That's my first question. So for example, call in and scrutiny. You can have policy development, but you also have the opportunity, and my view is in this council, it is not abused, to call in decisions that are made where members feel they want further analysis of this decision, whether it impacts on a policy and it changes it, that that process should still be there. So that's my first comment on this. The second comment is about policies and policy establishment and where we start from in May. Because we're in a position where we're coming out of a situation where we have strong leader model, where policies are implicit, they're set within the cabinet, they're not visible and written down. And we're moving into a committee system where policies should be visible and written down and then discussed and agreed. And once sanctioned, those policies are part of the way forward. In May, we'll not be in that position. And therefore, I still think that the opportunity to call in and scrutiny, I should continue while ever policies have not been mandated by a relevant committee. And the third point is a scenario about the largest party. We can arrive in a situation with a committee system where the largest party, not the majority party, but the largest party cannot influence policy development. A party with 38 members may have a suite of policies it wants to implement, but the opposition parties can put their own in by outvoting them at committee. The only recourse that largest party would have is calling the scrutiny to make their case and push their policies through that route. Without it, in some respects, they are not able to influence. And I think this is, these are fairly key principles for me in ensuring that the committee system does work effectively. It's not about all 84 members sitting around a table and being able to have an input. What matters is that decisions made and those members are able to influence them. So they are in the best interests of the people in Sheffield, and they do move this council forward. Thank you.
I think you've raised some very interesting points, Mike. And I think that they're things that we need to take cognisance of and look at very carefully as we move along in the process. I know certainly the presentation you did to Labour Group, there was a whole thing about scrutiny doesn't need to be inward outward facing. So we do need to look at that. And I think, you know, there's probably a short term view in terms of, as you, as you really identified, short term, how we deal with the ongoing policies that we will have after May. And then I suppose we also need to look at thereafter, do we think that there will be a point when, because of how we've set the system up, we want to continue to have scrutiny or not? So I think hopefully somebody's got those all captured and they are points that we do need to address as we go along. Is there anything you would like to add, Alex?
If you don't mind, I mean, there are some quite detailed questions, but I think it's not unhelpful to address them a little bit now. You know, we're trying not to get into too much yet a discussion about the relative merits of options for the structure. But especially because there's a few things in there that I'm not sure I necessarily agree with, actually, in terms of just the, the way that design is currently expected to work. So it might just be worth me responding on that front. So in terms of scrutiny call in, yes, this framework here makes a fairly strong assertion that there, that there is no, you know, it strongly says there's no requirement for statutory scrutiny in the new function. What it doesn't say is that there will not necessarily be a scrutiny committee. And we may decide to build one into the, into the system. There is typically a starting point which says that because you've got decisions being made in a cross-party setting, politically proportionate setting in the new system, there is no longer a necessary requirement, if the theory goes, for a separate cross-party committee to, to do the same thing, to kind of do that cross-party challenge of a decision. If the initial decision-making setting was cross-party, the question is, what, what are you adding by having another committee also with the same proportionality? Call in as well, I just, on the point of call in, to draw your attention to, I think, the third bullet point in section one, full council. It refers extremely briefly to the possibility of something whereby full council as the setting, where, you know, all 84 councillors with the, obviously the most literal interpretation of political proportionality could be, that we could choose, you could choose, to build into your system a mechanism whereby full council can call decisions off committees in. And we can design what that looks like. And that may fit arguably with the idea that this is all about the wider council and all members having that role across the decision-making piece. If there is a threshold at which potentially decisions can be called in to full council, that's a mechanism to allow that, which again, you might argue has more teeth than scrutiny currently does. Because if scrutiny calls something, and at the moment, first of all, it just comes to a politically proportionate committee where the, the balance of power plays out anyway. So small groups may have brought a call in, but the balance of power remains. And secondly, scrutiny doesn't have any power to overturn the decision, whereas full council in this circumstance would, it would actually have teeth. So arguably, that's, that, that might be where one might imagine something like call in coming out. In terms of whether parties that are not, and you said the largest party, but I, and but I'm going to talk in terms of an administration, by which I mean whichever group or whichever party or group of parties, whichever group or group of groups have agreed to elect a leader and put through a budget and, and between them share power. There is a clear steer from the, from the city and from the, you know, the groups we're talking to at the moment about wishing to see collaboration and cross-party working and, and voices of all councillors involved in decision-making. But there's also a political reality in, in a system where, where a majority is able to carry a vote. So there is, there is something quite careful to play through there and quite important about what does it mean to be operating in, in the British democratic environment, which is first past the post and so on. And how do we nevertheless address that desire we're hearing from the citizens in Sheffield to, to be, to be working across the political divide and so on? And that comes down to ways of working, I think, but also perhaps the structures. So we're certainly hearing what you're saying from other people we're talking to. And we'll need to bring all that to the attention of the committee. I think that's all I had to say on those points.
Just, just a couple of things in response. I'm not advocating a separate scrutiny body. What I'm meaning is that should members of a certain committee wish to have a decision looked at, it would come back to that committee. And it's part of their role to do that. It may well be that one or two other members of other committees who have an interest in this area could come in as well, but wouldn't have voting powers. But that would come back to that committee. In terms of scrutiny, yeah, in some respects, my view is that the existing system, that scrutiny and policy development, it doesn't do a lot of policy development. It doesn't do any policy development. It scrutinises internally and externally. The assumption that the majority party holds a sway, in my experience, on one or two occasions, it hasn't. And there have been unanimous decisions sent back to Cabinet to change their mind. They didn't. So scrutiny can work. It has worked in this council. And we shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. It just depends on where it sits. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Dale, then councillor Richards.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Alex. I'm coming back to this number for the themed committees. I think it's leading. I think having a number in there is leading the public into a, into a space where they're going to work between three and 10. I think the narrative should be more around a number of committees based on the work required for the local authority to be able to do its business in an effective way, rather than it being, well, we're looking at three and 10. I just find it quite leading for, for people who are interested, but might not understand the vast amount of work that is required for a local authority to be able to have to carry out. And I think, some other things I might be able to follow up by, by email. I, I, I have some concerns like councillor Livery regarding scrutiny and call in, which I have brought up before. But the, the other thing for me under number 12 are statutory responsibilities for members. I'm a bit confused about the two bullet points because they kind of contradict one another. So where it says that the lead member for children's services has a legal requirement, there is still a legal requirement that we have a lead member for children's services. And that could potentially be the combined chair of a relevant committee. You wrote it, you know what it says. But then individual members' decision-making is not permitted under a committee system. Now, looking at some decisions that need to be made in that portfolio quickly, I worry about that and the legal implications for that lead member on that committee, which could mean prison, actually, if things aren't done appropriately. So how would we, I know you probably can't answer that now, but I think we need to be mindful of that moving forward when we look at committee systems and that legal responsibility for individual members.
I think that's a really important point, Don, that just dealing with your last one first. And that may be something that I don't, I don't know, we need some legal advice or something about to deal with. Can, oh, you can ans, oh, we don't, we can answer it, which is good. And, and I think the, the first point that you make about the numbers, are we all happy as a group that we just reword, reword that to something more appropriate and we can get that, that resolved? Thank you.
Great. So I'll take the numbers out. Yes, in terms of these two, it's fascinating. And so I'm not, as I, as I will, have reminded you before, will remind you many times, I'm not a lawyer. But as I understand it, as I am told, the legislation that asked, that told councils that there must be a lead member for children's services, there is a view that that was drafted, forgetting that there would be some councils that are run under a committee system. And so, yes, there is a bit of a strange tension because it makes an individual member accountable, but they aren't able, under the, under the legal framework that they will operate in, in a committee system, to have personal decision-making responsibility for it. So we will, as exactly as you say, need to find a way to make sure that whoever is accountable in that lead member for children's services role has got a mechanism around them, whether it's because they're chairing a committee or whatever systems we've got for urgent decisions, that enables them to enact that responsibility.
Thank you. So while they've not, while they're not accountable, then they shouldn't be liable, in, in my view then. Because if they don't have accountability, how can they be liable?
Thank you. Yeah, we don't have a say over that. It's just a legal position. So, so what, what we need to do is to make sure that the statutory director for children's services within the authority has a really good relationship with the, whoever's got responsibility, the lead cabinet, lead member for children's, with that statutory responsibility, so that that trust there and they feel that they've got that support from the director. And if they're not got that, if they don't feel that they've got that support from the director, they need to be escalating that to the chief executive and the leader immediately. It's, it's, we're going to have to just get that relationship right.
Interesting, I think is perhaps the best way to describe that. Councillor Richards, then councillor Austin.
Okay, I have finally, I've been resisting, but I've now put on my amaral. I'm sorry. In relation to what councillor Livery rain, raised about if you're in the majority, you're a majority party, but not an overall majority on a committee, it's about making alliances and talking to the other members of the committee and either persuading them of your view or finding the bits that you do have in common that you can find as much as possible to agree on. And then the bits that you don't are the bits that you, you will have some discussion over, I guess. Otherwise, what we're going to have is people just turning up at committees and voting, and you could have a committee over in 30 minutes, I wish, having just steamrolled everything through. That, that isn't going to happen if you've got, if you don't have a majority on a committee. It requires building working relationships. it requires building working relationships. I don't think there's an awful lot between us on many, many policies, so I don't contemplate huge sparking points, there may be some, but let's look at what we have, you know, look at what we have in common. Something else I've asked Laurie about before is that we don't appear to have what I call the bumper book of policies in Sheffield, where it's all written down. So often, somebody says to me, well, that's the policy, and I go, well, how do I know? You know, was that passed in nineteen eighty-eight, or was it agreed last year, but I missed that meeting? And I think, actually, we do need to know, rather than just it being carried in various people's heads. I don't know how you do this, but I think it's important that we do, if we're going to move onwards, and know what we're working away from. And, sorry, on Dawn's question on number, on the number twelve bit, again, I think it's going to be about us going, doing the very dull job of going through all the delegated powers that we have currently to councillors and currently to officers, and working out how you can do something to, to reach a conclusion that, that works. But also, we're not the first authority, albeit the biggest and best authority, to be going for committee circumstances. So what have other people done, like Wirral or other people with committee systems, what have they done to, to make that work about the fact, having a member who's responsible, but without decision-making powers? There must be a solution so we don't have to find one ourselves, or a solution, we can say, well, that's a rubbish one, we'll do a different one, but something to work from.
Yeah, agree, that, that sounds like a really sensible way forward, and I must say, from a previous life of mine, my favourite question was always, where does it say that? So if you don't have a bumper book of policies showing us where it says that, how do we know what we're working to? So, yeah, that could be a really exciting job if anyone would like to volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that's acknowledged by the management team, that the, I think we did a count and there's something like a hundred and thirty-five different strategies or something. So it, it's, it's not unnoticed, isn't that? And it is something that we're working on, and Laurie's doing a lot of work, you know, pulling, pulling some of that work together. There is, it will, it all needs to sit within the corporate plan framework, so when we've got the work, or, you know, we, we get the work on the corporate plan understood, then we can work out what strategies we need. And, and the, where we need to get to is the policy framework and budget that goes to full council in February, is the policy framework and budget, so that we all understand what's within that policy framework and how it all fits together. It's not, we're not going to get there by next February, but, but we're, it's a piece of work, we're on it, yeah.
And can we all notice how very quietly Laurie is getting on with that? That is very impressive. Councillor Austin.
Thank you Chair. I've got sort of three points, which I think are sort of related to each other and not too highfalutin, fortunately. My first point is around, in point seven on page twenty-one, you talk about getting technical information and trying to look at different models for committees. And I just wonder, given our previous conversation around numbers three and ten, whether actually what we need is some sort of options of how many committees and how many people, I mean, if committees, if there's too many and they're too small, we're not going to be able to deal with proportionality properly. And equally, their subject matter will probably overlap a lot. If there's too many, then they'll be too big, and that is not, does not facilitate good discussion. So there's a lot of issues there around getting the balance of those committees right, and making sure that there's, that no one committee is going to get overwhelmed by the volume of work. So I think at some point, and I know it's not going to be now, but we do need really clear options about how we divide up the work and the size of the committees. My next point is just about the overarching committee, which, sort of reading this, maybe I'm not reading it right, but it seems to me that if the overarching committee takes all strategic decisions and sets the overall work programme, then actually that's a huge amount of power. And if we have a situation where, and I know we haven't decided this, but where the chairs say all come from the majority party, what we've actually got is a cabinet. And I think when we set up the remit for that overarching committee, we need to be really careful how that works, or actually we're going to have gone nowhere. And that leads into my third point, which is that you just talked about the administration as coming from a majority group, and clearly, I must be very naive, because I thought the whole point of this was that we moved away from having an administration, and that, yes, we will elect a leader, and all logic tells us that will come from the largest group. But surely the whole point is that we work much more collegiately, and we don't have an administration taking all the decisions and having all the influence. In practice, of course, if one group is much larger, they will have the majority on every committee, but the whole idea, I thought, was to get rid of, well, rid of this notion of an administration, clearly not.
I've got councillor Leary then councillor Lee, because I think you're going to keep coming back on those points, so we'll hear those first.
Yeah, when, when we looked at all this in overview scrutiny, there's one council which I distinctly remember had an overarching committee that met weekly, and their committees met bi-monthly. Clearly, that wasn't a committee system, but they called it it, and we really have to be careful about this and get this right.
Councillor Lee.
During an election, a political party puts forward a manifesto which states some of the policies they want to pursue over the following year and maybe in the years to come. And if they win that election, that manifesto is something that has to be implemented, because the people have said, please, we, we agree with you, we want those policies to be implemented, and you might, I know, first past the post is not something that everybody, is popular with everybody, but it's a system we have at the moment, and we have a popular vote across the city as well as winning electoral wards. I just want to not, not lose that we do, you know, people are elected on manifestos.
I think there are a number of issues where we've got to get the mechanics of all of this right, aren't there? And I, and I think a lot of this will be down to our goodwill and understanding of what the people of Sheffield have asked us to do as members of this council. Just sort of reading the, the bit about the overarching committee, it talks about developing a corporate plan, so are we saying then that that would be the corporate plan that is the manifesto of the majority party, or are we looking at that being something else that's a little bit wider? I don't know, you know, we'd all say, you know, if my, if, if my party's in the majority, then that's my, my manifesto, because I'm working to the, the rules by which we have been elected, and that's all about our electoral process as it works. So it is quite, it is tricky, and we've got to find, we've got to find a way around it. I've got councillor Austin then councillor Leary.
Chair, just, just one comment really, the, the idea, as I understood it behind the referendum, was that all councillors have influence, and obviously, we will all take our own views, opinions, manifestos with us to the discussion around a topic, and my hope and my understanding was the idea was we then come to some consensus agreement, but if we don't structure this right, that isn't what will happen.
Yeah, just, just to support what councillor Lee said, and the example I gave of a party of thirty-eight members, this takes away the opportunity to form a minority administration, because the party will not be able to do it under the committee system.
Technically, you're right.
So I'm not going to attempt to answer some of those points, which I think are, are all about your, your own personal or party philosophical view about what democracy is, what it means to be a councillor, and what it means to be elected as one, and to be a party amongst other parties. And actually, one of the things that I have asked that councillor, no, it's not councillor, sorry, that Matt Wood from the university has agreed to support us with, is something to help us look at all the different conceptions of democracy and put names on them, because there is a, there is a name for the theory of the type of democratic environment that was mentioned by councillor Austin a second ago, and there's a name for a kind of a first past the post, where it takes all kind of view as well, and there's also a name for that directly elected non-councillor I mentioned earlier, you know, it might be called an autocracy, why, I'll get there, I can't remember, no, I'm, I'm looking for a technocracy, that's it, a technocratic model, isn't it? So there's all, there's a kind of a, there's a language here, we, I think everyone, especially councillors, will come to this with an idea of what you think is true about democracy, and I, I hope to help give us some language to discuss and understand what we're actually disagreeing on or agreeing on, when we're talking about these different ideas of what does it mean to be elected, or to have a majority, or to work with other parties. I, I can't give you the answer to it, but I can hopefully help you have that discussion, which I'm going to try and do, and Matt's agreed to try and help us with that. There were a few other issues, and I'm not going to try, as I said, not try and respond to all of it, as for whether an overarching committee is a cabinet, or whether or not it can be built into this system, a structure that means that there would be more or less collaboration or cooperation or consensus. I think the, that my point as an officer is, on this is always going to be, that that is fundamentally about the choice that councillors make, about how they operate within whatever system we set up. We may be able to make some tweaks to this system that encourage or discourage that kind of way of working, but it's not the system or the structure that is going to define whether or not you have come to a political consensus on an issue, it's the councillors inside that structure who will, who will define that.
Councillor Gill again.
Yeah, I think you answered some of my questions there, but I, I wanted to pick up on what councillor Austin said, again. The way I see this process, and I'm aware that we all see it differently at the moment, is that we bring our manifestos to the different committees that we're on and put our points across for discussion, and I do think it is going to be challenging at the beginning for us to discuss these points, and there will be a tendency, I guess, for the majority party to outvote if it wants to, but we're, I, I think, Shonead raised it earlier as well, isn't it? We hope we can discuss these points and pick out the ideas that we can all agree on, that are good for the city of Sheffield, and I think because this is going to be a transparent process, the electorate, the voters, will see that we have raised the points in, in the, in the committee system, won't they? And they will see which councillors have raised what point, so they will see that their voices are being heard, but I agree, there's a lot of tweaks to be done, and I'm not sure if we don't need a practice session somewhere in private, all working together to try and work out how this democracy bit is going to happen, but anyway.
I believe that's the intention behind the transitional committees. Thank you members, I mean, certainly what we've seen, I think, just from that discussion, is that the framework does successfully generate some conversation about pertinent points that we're going to need to answer as a, as a committee. So I hope on that basis, you as a committee will be happy to endorse it. At the moment, we've got one specific change, which is to remove the numbers from, I think, maybe even the first or line early on in, in section one about, sorry, section four about the themed committees, but other than that, I hope that means that it's something you feel you can endorse. I just want to emphasise, that comes forward, the point that in the report at, oh, I've lost my page, the point I made, which is that, even by the time, three point four, even by the next time you see this, this framework may have developed and changed. The idea is that as ideas come forward from you as a committee, as we work with you through this process, we will start to bake into the, the framework that we're putting out there more and more certainty about certain aspects of it. So I expect it will change, and over time it will become a draft proposal, rather than just a framework for discussion, that's what the intention is. So I'll move on to the third, sorry, councillor Lee had a hand up, do you want to?
Just, going back to what councillor Labour said about call-ins, very often in the council, when we've had decisions made by cabinet members, the public are very, very interested and very maybe opposed, because they're in a particular sector, and scrutiny has been a means for them to go and call in that decision or, and have that scrutinised, and I think that that needs to be built into the system at some point. And I can think of some examples, I won't go, there are a few years back now, but where, you know, I've, I've evoked a lot of emotion and a lot of dissent about decisions we might be making when we've made them, because in good faith. So I think we do need to have that mechanism within a particular committee, I don't know how you would work that in.
So in terms of, in terms of how this might be developed, I'm with you up until within a particular committee, so that part is a choice, you might decide to have a committee that deals with any kind of, if the public wants to challenge a decision that's been made, they do it through a particular committee, but there's going to be all kinds of options, it might be that you build that into all of the committees and the way that they operate, for example. Okay, so I will move on then to the, apologies, I'm taking a long time over this report, but I feel like it's a discussion we're having, I hope you do too. The, the final aspect of this is, is, in, in some ways it's less contentious, but it's asking a lot of the committee, and for the benefit of anybody watching this, this webcast, I have talked to the committee about this timescale in some detail in the last week, and tried to give an impression of how challenging I think this is going to be. So if, bear, bear in mind that we've held some discussion about that already before we came into this public domain, because it was about people's personal diaries and so on. But nevertheless, let me set it out, so in your September meeting, you agreed this kind of two-stage process, which was that up till Christmas we'd be doing one thing, after Christmas another, I won't go over it again. You have it set out now in a diagram under section four point one, where the second and third block out of four blocks are those two phases that we talked about before. What we've added is a phase before, which we've already, which kind of primarily done, which saw the planning and setting ourselves up, and a stage at the end, which just points out that that's by no means the end of this process, and you can certainly expect that even as soon as May next year, potentially changes could be made, and certainly over the coming years, you would expect to continue to assess and refine how well it's working. What we've done though is put more detail inside those, so under section four point four onwards, you've got some more detail about what this phase between now and Christmas means, and just to summarise, what we're suggesting, what is suggested to you as a committee, is that we try and do what you might call an inquiry, or select committee style exercise, or maybe you could call it a scrutiny committee style exercise, although I must emphasise, it's not, we're not a scrutiny committee. All I mean is, take a raft of evidence, take the opportunity to hear from witnesses, to call for evidence and so on, formally as a committee, to get to a point where you are able to make a series of recommendations to full council for a draft model of the future governance of Sheffield City Council. It's just a mechanism to get you as a committee through this, but we don't have a lot of time. Working back from the end point, we can see that we need a final agreement on this in, in March next year, we need time to work on the constitution, the detail of the constitution before that, and so, working way back, we can see that that draft model needs to go to full council for endorsement in January. To get there, we need you to be making a recommendation on a draft model, in words and pictures, you know, not, not redrafted bits of the constitution, but words and pictures, before Christmas. It won't be a finalised whole picture that can't change, but it'll be enough of a clear idea about where we're going, so that all the work that happens after Christmas can take place in that context, can check and challenge what's been suggested, can talk about how residents' voices will fit into that, or might want to tweak it in order to better fit into that. to better fit into that, and can write a constitution that fits with it, but we have to get there before Christmas, in order to get that, in order to land that. What that means is that we're proposing some extraordinary meetings of this committee in early December to add to the one you've got scheduled at the end of November, and possibly having to keep the one we've got scheduled on the 22nd of December, which I know we all hoped we wouldn't, but if the work needs doing, we may have to. And between now and November, we propose as an officer team to go away and do at least what is set out under four points, under the first of two 4.7s that I appear to have put in my report, sorry, momentary lapse. Essentially, this is to get you to the 30th of November meeting with as good as we can an analysis against that framework that we're asking you to agree today, of all of the information and input that so far has been received by the council. A lot of that was helpfully collated in 2019 by a scrutiny exercise, but there's been plenty more heard since then, and in the event last night, and the event on Friday, and in all the other work we're going to be doing between now and then, we're going to be gathering plenty more input for you too. You can see some of you mentioned earlier about needing to get examples from other authorities, we're absolutely already setting about doing that, and we'll feed it into you, as well as lessons learned from the academic world and so on and so forth. What this means is that we will be meeting as a committee to plan that exercise over the next couple of weeks, not in public, I don't think, it's just about saying, what do you need us officers to go away and do, so that by the time you get back in public on the 30th of November, you've got all that information in front of you, and that we can have a plan to invite whoever you need to hear from at your December, early December meetings, so that you've got the evidence you need by mid-December to ask officers to write that report. It's extremely challenging to do it in that timescale, but we're going to make our best attempt, and we will get that report to council to be as detailed as it can be, wherever we have got to by that point, in order to be able to help us to proceed. And we're going to have to work closely with you as a committee, and the chair and vice-chair in particular, over the next six weeks, constantly, every week, to make sure we're feeding that information into you, helping you understand it, appreciate it, challenge it, and piece it together into a series of recommendations. We also then have, under phase three, that, the proposal that we will then set about doing that constitutional detail at this committee, which will also be extremely busy to turn that around, and I imagine more details that we didn't put into our original recommendation to council may come out as we get through the constitution, and that will be alongside the, the kind of the, the most involved piece of public engagement we'll be doing post-Christmas, which you're going to hear more about under the next item. So I hope you take any questions on that ambitious timescale.
Thank you, Alex. I know I'm not the only one in the room who looks back fondly on the work up to Christmas that we did as a scrutiny committee a couple of years ago, so yeah, we have been there before. I've got councillor Lee Gray, and then councillor Dale.
Thanks, Chair. I get the sense with the members that some reference to call-in and scrutiny in some form of word should be endorsed within the discussion framework, so it's clear and we haven't lost it. Is that what most of us think? Because I get the sense that that's what we want, that that is, continues through. How it will manifest itself is another matter, but the principle that it's there, I believe, should be incorporated, please.
I was actually going to say when we were summing up that one of the things that we need to do is make sure that we've got scrutiny covered in the work moving forward, so yeah, that's one of the points I have noted, Mike.
So just in terms of the framework, the wording that we have at the moment, under section seven, the first bullet point, it says, cross-party check and challenge is built into every decision-making committee and full council, so that's a degree of scrutiny, and we also have under the full council piece, a bit about, full council is the forum where all members steer the overall direction of the council and dot-dot-dot, keep oversight of decisions made across the whole system, and it says in exceptional circumstances can overturn decisions made by committees. So that's what we so far say about how decision-making might be scrutinised and called in or turned over or whatever. If you would like a different form of statement about how you would like check and challenge to operate, that, we can do that, I just want to refer you back in the minutes of the last meeting to the principles we agreed, because if you recall, we had a discussion about whether to use the word scrutiny, or whether to use a phrase which was, instead, I think we used, here we are, point four on page 13 of your pack, there was originally in the governance principles agreed by the scrutiny committee in 2019 and endorsed by council, there was a point which said that scrutiny in the new system should be X, Y, Z, and at your last meeting of this committee, you agreed to change that for the purpose of a design principle, to instead read, mechanisms for holding decision-makers and other parts of the wider partnership landscape to account should be strengthened in any future, yada, yada, yada. So that was because we were recognising that it might not be a scrutiny committee, an overview and scrutiny committee, but that it was critically important in the view of this committee, that the capability to hold to, hold decision-makers to account would be built in and in fact be stronger in the new system. So it is, I think that is what you were asking for, that today, you were asking us to make sure that that mechanisms for holding to account and check and challenge and so on are built in, but if you want to reflect that statement in a different way in the framework document, then I'm happy to take the committee's steer.
But I suggest that at the moment we have key decisions which can be subject to call-in, that remains, where it happens to after that, and what the mechanism is can be developed.
Councillor Everie, in my view, that is an answer to a design question, which we do not yet have all the evidence in front of us to try and answer. My worry is that there's probably quite a big discussion to have about how scrutiny might work, and your view at this point might be that there should be call-in on something called a key decision at something like a scrutiny committee, but we've got lots of thoughts and viewpoints from all sorts of settings that I'd like to be able to put in front of you before the committee closes that issue off too much, so my recommendation is not to specify that yet in something like a discussion framework, but to note that that's your view and that you, that will shape the discussion of the committee going forward.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the concepts that you're talking about there, scrutiny, call-in, key decisions, are all essential requirements of a strong leader model. We're moving away from a strong leader model to a committee system, and what we don't, or what I'm hearing, is that what you don't want to do is replicate the strong leader model within the committee system, so just to sort of agree with Alex, that, you know, keep an open mind as to whether those are the things you want, or actually it's that check and challenge and accountability that you want, and you need to work out what's the best way to get that. It might be something really similar to what you've had previously, but if you start using terms like scrutiny, call-in, key decision, it's all the stuff that's a requirement of the strong leader model, so it might start to, you know, set the tone as to where you're going.
Yeah, I understand, I understand the words and the links, what I'm on about is the processes, and not to lose the processes in this, because this is important.
Councillor Dale.
Thank you. I'm hoping mine's going to be really simple. It's a request from myself and probably other members, can we get these dates in our diary really quickly, well in advance, even if we don't have them, let's just tentatively put, block some dates in where you think we need to meet, we'll take your lead on that. I just think it's really important because we're all really busy and we don't want to miss and not be able to attend. Thank you.
That is, that is ongoing as we speak, I think we're sort of almost there, we're sort of finalising.
Yeah, I know it's not easy as all in as dairies, sorry, but I just think we need to block, get them blocked in, even like I say, if we don't meet, that's fine, but at least we've got them blocked in.
We then have free time.
So Chair, with that, I commend these recommendations to you, I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that was a really useful and helpful debate, I think there are a number of things that we need to make sure that we do, I think picking up on firstly Mike's point about process, whether that's scrutiny or whatever, we need to make sure that we keep that in our minds as we're going along, we need to make sure that we pick up the business issues that we, that we focused on while councillor Maruff was here, and obviously then the quite wide debate we had about, shall we call it, the ways of working in this new world, to make sure that we've got the new process right, but with that in mind, are we all happy with the four recommendations that you have on pages 17 and 18, please? Anybody not happy? Lovely, thank you for that. Moving swiftly on then to item eight, which is engaging and involving Sheffield in the transforming city's governance. Laurie, I think, is presenting on this, and can I also introduce Sarah, who is sitting at the back, who is from Involve, you're very welcome, thank you for coming along today.
Right, thank you, Chair. That was a really useful discussion, and in some ways it's, as we find at certain points, it actually delves into this bit because they're so intrinsically linked, and we can't really separate them out really, so it makes a lot of sense. And I probably don't want to spend too much time on this because I think members have time to have a look at the paper anyway, and there are some critical points in here that I just want to flag up. The first one is obviously this links back to some of the things we've said in the one year plan for the city council about the sort of organisation we aspire to be, and fundamentally, if we want to be more connected to communities and we want to be engaged, we want to empower people in the city, the way we go about developing our committee system, but also how we operate should feel and look quite a lot like that, so that's the message we're trying to get across in here, and alongside the development of the framework that Alex has just set out, what the paper suggests is to complement that, it's going to be quite high speed, it's going to be quite intensive work, in the similar way we've just talked about the future dates for this committee, but also the intensity around the options and challenges we've got over the coming months. We're intending to do this, to follow that approach really with what we, how we involve citizens in that. Over the last couple of, last week, as Alex has alluded to, we've done two engagement sessions of a physical one and a virtual one, and we're planning in this to do that on a fortnightly basis now, and they'll rotate, and not wanting to go back to the previous conversations with the physical ones, we'll move around the city, and we are booking locations across Sheffield to make sure that communities have got easy access to those physical events, that they don't have to travel right into the city centre, so we're, that's underway now. I think, this may not be fully confirmed, but I think the next one is probably, I think is in Burngriev, I think is in early November, and then the following one is somewhere in the south-east, I think, as well, so, but we can confirm all that, all those as we move forward. If members could look on page 36 of your packs, what we've suggested in here is that the way we want to work over the coming months really should be underpinned by some principles about the sort of engagement activity we want to undertake, and which should mirror the sort of aspirations we've set out in the one-year plan as well. That obviously includes the transparency, and I keep saying this phrase, but it's working, you know, working in the open, and in some ways, the conversation we've had this afternoon is exactly that, it's that showing that the development of the framework, the development of the committee system, the thoughts and the process and everything goes around it is very transparent and open, and actually, it's a live conversation, it's not something that's happening behind the scenes, it's something that is, we're doing publicly and we're doing in these events as well. So those principles sort of set out that transparency, the desire to be, to access our diverse population, but also do that in a fair and equitable way, and ensuring that we've got inclusivity across the participation from different communities in the way we work. We also need to be responsive, and this is something that's come out of the events in the last week as well, about citizens desiring that we are, we're showing, we're listening, we're showing to be listening, but also that we're responsive to what people are saying as well, so we can demonstrate where people's contributions and input have impacted on our thinking as we work through the development of the proposals. One of the comments that we can come back to is just saying, asking the committee whether you feel those principles are appropriate, we can come back to them in a minute. I am quite conscious of having multiple layers of principles and the values and ways of working, and I think Alex and I were suggesting that it might be quite useful to bring, to put these, make sure these are reflected in the, in the design principles as well, because fundamentally, they're about the same, the same ways of working as we want to undertake when we're in a committee system anyway, so there's a question there for the committee to consider. Just moving forward, because I'm conscious I don't want to monopolise the committee's time going through the entirety of the paper, what we've set out on the bottom, from the bottom of page 37, is that period from September this year into December about how we're going to operate over the coming months, with a key set of bullets there really about what we want to do. This will develop and iterate, and I wouldn't take this as an absolutely finished product, but it sets out the general strategy of how we want to work, we'll be very, very flexible, we've got a team of fantastic people in Hannah's service and my team, and in Alex's team in terms of the governance side, who are proactively and quite keen to get out there and talk to people, and we will do everything we can to make sure that happens, and we will respond to people's desires for us to do that as well. That includes those fortnightly drop-ins and public events, a bit like the one we did last week. We want to make sure we use our communications channels, because that's something that citizens have pushed back to us in the last week as well, about how aware people were of the events and the things we were doing, how people can get more involved, how they can quickly pass those messages on to their networks and the people they work and live in, and their neighbourhoods as well, and so we need more online presence, more digital presence, but more presence in some of the, in some of our kind of networks, things like libraries and that sort of thing. We also want to make sure we interconnect with our VCF sector, and making sure we connect to communities through those routes as well, and again, being proactive and going out and talking to communities and being part of those networks. I've also alluded to the work we'll be doing with members on those fortnightly bases as well, to make sure there's a drop-in opportunity for members to come and involve themselves in the development and hear about what's going on and contribute to that. And then just alluding to the bits that Alex has already talked about, about those committee hearings, councillor Maruff, who's not in the room at the moment, raised a point around business, and I think there's a specific piece of work to do on that, and it's something I'll pick up, and I'm going to talk to colleagues in city growth about it, but also through, connected to the city partnership as well, as through the Gemma Commerce, but some of the other networks in the city. Business have been fantastic, and particularly in response to Covid, we had a business recovery group as well, which brought in business from across the city, and not people who were usually engaged with some of our fora, and I think what we'll do is go and connect to them and find the best routes to connect to our business communities. I should say, through the scrutiny work we did in 2019, business did contribute to that, and actually came and gave evidence a couple of times, so that was quite useful, and we should go back to that as well. So just, and then to moving on from that, as we've talked about a couple of times and alluded to, we want to get into that more intensive piece of work after Christmas, so once we've developed the broad model for how we think the committee system might work, we want to focus some really intensive period of time around working with citizens in Sheffield, and particularly taking the steer from this committee in the last meeting about making sure we reach those voices of people who didn't naturally engage or didn't want to always engage in Sheffield's kind of democratic process, and through meetings like this, we made sure we reached out to those communities. I'm delighted to say, we have Sarah Allen in the room today, who's from Involve, what an absolutely leading kind of organisation in community engagement activity, have done some fantastic work, everything from recently doing the citizens' assemblies with six select committees, so the UK Citizens' Assembly, which you'll have probably seen covered on the BBC, everything, and down to things like the looking at the abortion work in Northern, in the Republic of Ireland as well, and doing some work particularly on democracy in the UK at the minute. So I think there's hugely, huge intelligence and capacity and expertise and independence to bring into this process to think about how we best ensure that citizens have a role in not only shaping the committee system, but thinking about how we change and develop our culture and ways of working, which then apply to the future of the committee system and our democracy as well. I've set out very broadly what I think, what we think Involve are going to do, but I don't really want to steal Sarah's thunder, because one, she's come all the way here, and two, she's way better at this than I am, so I'm going to, if it's all right, Chair, I'm going to hand over to Sarah to just talk a bit about that, but generally, we're all very excited, she's here, and very excited that we're going to be doing this piece of work as well.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invite to be here, I'm really pleased to be here. I noticed someone got really excited when you said, Laurie, that we did the abortion work in the Republic of Ireland, I'm really sorry, but we didn't, I can't claim, I can't claim the work of another organisation, but we do work with them quite closely and they evaluate some of our work, and there's kind of a good exchange, but I don't want to be here on false pretences. And I just want to very briefly introduce you to Involve, in case you're not so familiar with us, and then I'll talk you through the work we're planning to do with the council. So as Laurie said, my name's Sarah Allen, I'm Director of Capacity Building and Standards at Involve. I'm Director of Capacity Building and Standards at Involve. We're the UK's public participation charity and we have a vision of a vibrant democracy with people at the heart of decision-making. And the particular way in which we seek to contribute to that is to develop and support new ways for people to be able to shape the decisions that affect their lives. We work with the UK government, devolved governments, the UK Parliament, devolved parliaments, local government, public bodies and arms-length bodies, community groups and some private organisations across the UK to engage the public. And as we do that, we use a wide variety of methods, engagement methods, in order to make sure that we're meeting both the needs of the organisations that are commissioning that engagement or leading that engagement and the needs of the people that they're seeking to reach. We find that's the best way forward and so one of the results of that, for example, is that when we work with councils, councils often come to the events and find that they don't know anyone in the room because we've managed to reach beyond those people who normally engage. So we're very genuinely, actually genuinely, I'm not just saying it, excited by the work that you're doing here in Sheffield at the moment. We think that the point when you're looking at how your governance systems work and when that's changing is a good time to have another look about how you engage local people in the decisions that you make. And that it is also very sensible to get some feedback from local people and feed into how you do that as you go along. And we really welcome the fact that you're doing that. So to get on to more of the specifics of what we've been asked to do, we've set an overarching question for our work with you, which is how do you, the council, make decisions in a way that empowers people in Sheffield and is inclusive, accessible, representative and connected with all the people and communities in the area? So it's a nice, a nice small question to look at. But the aim is to get to that and to work with you to get the answer to that question through three streams of work, which I'll just very briefly, well, perhaps not so briefly outline. So the first work stream is one that we call Looking Inwards. And it's working with you internally to ensure that there's a strong alignment between public engagement and the new decision-making model, which means, in essence, or one of the things it might mean, is that public engagement is linked to the decision-making process. So what we found when we've gone to other councils and similar bodies is that high-quality engagement can be taken place, but it's somewhere over here, it's on the periphery of what that organisation is doing. And actually, when decisions are being taken, it's not really looked at and it's not really considered. And the implications of that are firstly that the council doesn't benefit from the insight and the energy and the feedback of people when it takes its decisions. But also, secondly, that if you then have a mismatch between people's expectations of what they think is going to happen with what they say and then what you actually do with it, people get very disappointed. And so it's important to make sure that everyone's clear on what it is that you are offering so that expectations can be managed. So part of this work then, work stream one, is looking with you at how best to connect that engagement into the governance structures and how decisions are made. Work stream two then is called Looking Outwards. So it's working with you to develop and deliver public engagement activity to get that initial feed into the kind of big question that you've posed us. As Laurie said, most of that will happen immediately after Christmas. And the idea is that we're going to work with you to deliver that engagement in a way that firstly provides you with quality answers and insight to the work that you're doing, particularly from people that you wouldn't normally hear from. It also works, as I said previously, for those people that you want to reach at the same time. And that it helps you to establish relationships, particularly with seldom heard groups in the city, that you can then build on for future engagement work. And that, as Laurie said, is because we're starting this engagement over Christmas, after Christmas, but you want it to continue on and continue beyond May. So doing that in a way that really establishes a firm foundation and builds relationships for that. We're currently developing some suggestions and options for what that might look like to get feedback from stakeholders on that. We haven't agreed yet a set of options to take to stakeholders, but people like, I think, things to be a little bit concrete. So my very initial thinking is that some of the methods that you might want to consider are what are called community conversations or distributed dialogues, which would build on the work you're doing with local area committees. So they're about developing a sort of small event plan, which you then go out to organisations and ask them to run on your behalf, providing a little bit of funding for them to do that. And that means that people are taking part in the engagement in spaces where they feel safe and with people that they trust, rather than asking people to come and engage with you maybe when they don't have that relationship with you already. Another method that you could consider is something called citizen researchers, where you work with individuals from particular communities and support them to go out and engage their peers, perhaps by talking them through a survey in a way that isn't leading. Again, allowing people who are trusted to engage with those people to get kind of a better conversation going and build those relationships. A third option, and I won't go through too many, is something called a dialogue workshop, which is more similar to kind of the citizens' assemblies and juries that you might have heard about in the news, but where you'd go out and recruit a representative sample of the local population. Now, it doesn't have to be strictly representative and we'd work with you to look at kind of what the demographic balance you wanted in that attitude and all the behavioural balance. You might want to pick up who voted one way in the referendum, who voted another, who didn't vote at all, for example. And to bring them together, you'd pay them incentive to do that, cover their costs and so on, to have a look at these questions. And one way you could do that is to have those particular geographical areas of the city where you don't, like kind of small ones in each area, to make sure you're hearing from locations where you don't normally hear from people. So, you know, those are just some of the sorts of things that you could do. We are aiming to take them to stakeholder, to take some initial ideas for that to stakeholder organisations. And the reason that we're looking to do that is firstly so that those stakeholder organisations feel some ownership over the process, feel that they've had a chance to feed in, feel supportive of it. And secondly, because obviously they hold a really good knowledge of the local communities in Sheffield and their feedback on whether they think they're the right methods, whether they think there are other methods that would work. Organisations or community groups that might want to get involved with that will obviously be really, really useful. So that's about reaching out. And then thirdly, and very briefly, work stream three is around training, mentoring and support. So that's about us while we're here and we're working with you, passing over as much of our experience and skills to you as possible so that you need organisations like us less in future. I mean, we're a charity, we're not looking to come back, we're looking to transfer the skills over to you. And also to building kind of an internal, helping you to build an internal understanding of the role that public engagement can play and is going to play in your new governance structures. So that might be training and mentoring for officers or for senior management or both. It could be support for councillors if you want it. So councillors, for example, in my experience, tend to be very well-connected to communities already. And it's not about changing that work that you do because that needs to continue. And what it would be more about is supporting you to look at the new approach to public engagement. Think about how it relates to your role and how you may or may not want to interact with it. So for example, if you're using a method like a community conversation, you might be able to identify groups who might want to be part of it. You might want to attend some of the conversations or not. You might want to go and give feedback to groups and delve into more into issues that they raise, or you might not. And there's quite a large degree of choice for you within that as individuals about how you might want to or might not want to engage. So that's the sort of very initial outline of where we've got to and I'm really happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any? councillor Dale.
Thank you. It's not really a question, it's a couple of comments really. I think the training and mentoring is a key to this because we're trying to create something new and change the culture and the way which we work. So I think the training and monitoring should go across the board through offices at every level and members. Yeah, I forgot what else I was going to say. No, but that's really, really, really important. I think, I think we do a lot of it anyway, don't we, as elected members, we're out there in communities. What I would say with regarding the training and mentoring as a member who's just gone through a lot of lack training and a lot of everything else is capacity of members to get things in. So that if we're going to make, if we're going to make the most of it and if we're going to really drive change, it needs to be accessible to everyone. So just be mindful of that. And I think when working with stakeholders in communities as well, be mindful of their capacity to be able to deliver because they're already quite, Laurie knows, they're very, we're very stretched. Thank you.
I believe, all I would say, I agree completely. I think there is something I really liked about what we've talked to Involve about really and what Sarah's really contributed to this, about that, that sort of legacy to it as well, that it's not just Involve delivering that sort of expertise and training, it's giving us that capacity to learn as an organisation and get better at this. And I think from what I've heard from the citizens that we've talked to in the last week, that's their bare minimum expectation for us, that we, this process, this approach to kind of enhancing our democratic model will make us as officers and as members more accessible, more engaging in the way we go about everything we do, not just the decision-making processes. So I think that's where we probably want to be really.
I don't know if I meant to come back at all, but just to say that from my experience, all your comments are completely right.
Thank you for that. We put that in ragtime. No, I just think, if I can just come back please Chair, this is really exciting stuff. And I think if we get it right, and having looked at this, I was thinking about legacy. You know, we've done a lot of work on the run-up to this, you know, big conversational. And I think that sort of thing is what we need to keep doing and it needs to be embedded in our work all year round, every year, so that that constant dialogue. So yeah, I think it's just all really exciting stuff.
I agree though, absolutely. And it would be really good to get, you know, to get started with it. I think we are really looking forward to the new year. It is quite a new, exciting way of working for councillors. I think you're spot on about, you know, the legacy stuff because we have elections every year. So it's really important that as new members come along onto the council that, you know, they understand and can pick up and get a real good induction into the council in terms of our new way of working as well. So that's really important. Any more questions or is that been really easy? Sorry, Gillian.
And just really to let the committee know that from a senior office perspective, we're quite excited by this prospect of, you know, the mentoring and learning that Involve are offering to the organisation. So just to stay with you on that.
Councillor Richards. Thank you, councillor Grokot. Cut. Sorry. I had one question for Sarah and one general point. Sarah, I think I'm really pleased that your organisation is going to be here to give us a bit of a hand. I just wanted to ask, can you give us an example of where you've engaged, you've got past the terminally interested and got to the less heard voices? And how you did that? Is it a really simple thing? Is it a really convoluted thing? Or is it something you just thought, why hadn't we thought of that sooner? That's my question for Sarah and you have to think. My other observation is that It's Our City said that they had had 20,000 conversations when they got their votes for this change to the administration model. How much of their methodology or how much of their experience have they been willing to share with us in terms of, they got out there and they got people to sign up? And I know sometimes we think people didn't necessarily know what they were signing up to. But on the whole, I suspect they did, whether it was about not being fond of the council or desperately wanting a committee system. But how, what's the things that they would offer us that they have learned? Have they sent us or spoken to us about this? Are they willing to be helpful on this issue?
That sounds like a question for Alex, but I think, you know, those of us who saw The It's Our City, it wasn't just about the conversations, it was about the wider campaign as well, wasn't it? And they did an awful lot of good campaigning, social media, that sort of thing as well. But I'll go to Sarah to talk to your first point for a second.
Yes, so how to get past the terminally interested, as you put it. So I would say all our projects do that and are successful at doing that. And I think it's because, I'll give you, I will give you a couple of examples because you asked for them. But I think what's behind it is a difference in mindset and a difference in approach. So I think we would take what we call a design approach to engagement. That means, and this isn't a comment on you because I don't know enough about how this council operates yet to know if this is true here. But often when we get approached by councils, we're asked kind of how can we get sort of more people to council meetings? How we can get more people to structures that are already in place? Whereas our approach is to be like, well, what do you want to hear people's input on? Who do you want to reach and where are those people? And therefore, what methods would be best to go and reach out to those people where they are in a way that will make them take part? So usually, if you take that approach, then it's not so hard to get past the terminally interested, as you put it. To give you two examples from recent work, if you'd like those. As well, I'm going to give you two really different ones, one very hyper-local one and one national one, just for variety. So Climate Assembly UK, that you've probably all heard of, a project we run for six select committees of the UK Parliament. So that got past.
I'm sorry, Sarah, can you just speak, I know you're really enthusiastic, can you speak a bit more slowly?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
For old ladies, thank you.
I'm very conscious of your time as well, I'm so sorry. So Climate Assembly UK, this project we ran for the UK Parliament for six select committees and it brought together a representative sample of the UK population to look at how the UK could meet its climate targets. So it reached out through how it recruited, so it used a method known as sortition. So it started by sending letters to 30,000 households randomly selected from the UK, no, sorry, from the Royal Mail postcode address file, that's the best way to do it in the UK, asking them, explaining what it was and asking them if they wanted to take part. People then replied if they wanted to and were free on the relevant dates. And you find for these processes that people take part for all different reasons. So some people feel they've got a letter from Parliament and it's sort of their civic duty, a bit like jury service, to do it. Some people want a weekend away from the kids at paid, at paid-for hotels. You get people responding for a variety of reasons. And as they respond, you then ask them questions about their demographics or, you know, whatever you're recruiting on. So in this case, six demographic criteria and also a question about their attitudes to climate change itself. And then you put that data into a computer and it generates for you your final sample of, in this case, 108 people who are representative of the wider population in all of those ways. And you cover their costs and you meet their accessibility needs and so on. There's a really lovely, I'm allowed to say this because I didn't make it, documentary about Climate Assembly UK on BBC iPlayer at the moment called The People Versus Climate Change. It's a really lovely watch, they've done it in a very human way through the stories of some of the assembly members. And it's a kind of makes you laugh, makes you cry kind of thing, rather than being about the process. But I recommend having a look at that. And a totally different approach, and just very briefly, is something we're running at the moment called Our Zero Selby, which is looking at how to create a community-led transition on climate in Selby in North Yorkshire. So that's starting, it's very local, partnering with a local VCS organisation. And it's got a number of phases and the first of those, which is what we're in at the moment, is crowdsourcing ideas. So we're using a community conversation approach for that. So we're going to all sorts of organisations locally, different people working with young people, different, you know, the Nitten Natter group, the kind of the local gardening group, the, you know, all these different groups, the sports clubs, faith groups, all these different groups that exist. And we're combining that with online and offline surveys for people to use, which leaving some, helping some people to fill them out, but also kind of available online and with QR code trails and things like that. And then it's going to go on to some more kind of intense events where people look at what comes out of them and create a local plan. And that has sections looking at engaging the business community and sections looking at engaging the farming community and so on as well locally. So a couple of very different approaches.
So I said, oh yes, I could answer, but actually it is really, so Laurie's really the subject matter expert on this side. So what I think, I don't want to presume to speak for It's Our City in this setting or any other, but I believe in response to a question like, are they willing to share how to do this well? I think they would probably say, we are desperate to share with you how to do this better. Please let us tell you how that would be done. I believe they are genuinely interested in helping the council do this well. And so, you know, let's take that as a question to go back to them with and see what we can learn about how to do that well from what they did. I think they'd be pleased to be asked. Do you want to add anything then?
I'd only to agree and obviously we've had people from It's Our City who've been involved in It's Our City at both events in the last two, over the weekend. And that is the general sense of the conversation, they want to help us, they want to work with us, contribute to it. And actually, again, harking back to the 2019 scrutiny work, they did proactively engage in that. They submitted content to the hearings we did, they encouraged their networks to complete the call for evidence we did. So they are ready and willing to do it. And I think that's, you know, it's an offer that they have got significant expertise because they've spent time studying some of this. So we probably should, you know, make sure that they have that route, just like everybody else does really. else does, really.
councillor Dale. So just a quick logistical thing from me as well, just to be mindful about messaging and why Involve might be coming into communities, because sometimes people come in and communities aren't clear why and what's happening. And I think that's for us as a local authority to ensure that the city and its citizens know what we're doing and why, and people will be coming to speak to them. And I say this because there's currently a local area committee questionnaire going around, so that's another committee. So I think the citizens of Sheffield are going to get really confused about all the different work streams and committees, systems that are being put into, potentially put into place next year. Thank you.
Sorry, whilst charging around Twitter yesterday, and I'm desperately trying to find, here we are, there's something called New Constellations that's also on Twitter and is asking people about Sheffield. Can I ask, do we know about it? What is it? And is it tied in with this? And if not, can it be, or is it a completely different thing?
I spoke to them last week, but I think Laurie's going to tell you all about them.
I, I can, I can talk a little bit about it. I think it's, 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 it's something that's about, that's actually connected to thinking about the city's future and city visioning. So less directly about cities and engagement in, in terms of how we develop the committee system, but thinking about where the city's going. It's not something, it's something the city councillors are part of or involved in as a partner, as, in terms of the anchor institutions all in the city being supportive of it, but it's not something we're leading or funding at the minute, it's something that Joseph Randtree Foundation have funded. And the, the leaders, leaders come from academia, academia actually. So if you look on that Twitter thread, it tells you some of the people that have been driving it and some of the people who've been involved in the conversations they've set up so far. The thing that's been touted on Twitter now and in the, in the, in the kind of press and things is about having cities and engagement in talking about the Sheffield, Sheffield story for the next 20, 30, 40 years, whatever that feels like, what it feels like to them, what the challenges are. So it's, it's something we, we sort of endorse and we, we think it's a good idea, it's something that's been funded by the Joseph Randtree Foundation project. So in answer to the other bit about does this connect? Yes, it definitely does. I think it's all about the, the kind of change we're going through in Sheffield, about how, how we start telling that story about what the city's fantastic assets are, what a brilliant place it is to live, but ensuring that we're, we're in and of our communities in the way we want to be, really. And I think making sure the citizens have a strong voice in whatever that developing city strategy looks like, which is something we need to do alongside the corporate plan. So it all connects together, basically. And I think, taking councillor Dale's point as well, there is not necessarily, there is some confusion, particularly one of the things we couldn't, we get, we've had through the conversations we've had with communities in the last week and previously, is that how is this different to local area committees? And I think the work that Sarah's outlined actually is complementary to that space. It's about how do we make local area committees work fantastically well, because involving communities at that level, how do we give ourselves the skills and capacity to be able to do that? And also, how do we ensure that people feel confident, that they know where to raise issues, and when they do raise them, the council will be responsive in that? And I think that's, that's how all the work sort of fits together. None of it's wrong, it's, but I think there is something about how we, we need to think through how we communicate that in a really consistent way as well, about that's the sort of aspiration we've got for Sheffield, that as, us as members and us as officers and as citizens, it's the thing they've, the citizens have told us they want from us, and we're putting in place the piece of the jigsaw to get there, but it's making sure we tell the story of how that jigsaw fits together as well a little bit, if you see what I mean.
If there's no more questions, are we all happy to accept the two recommendations that we've got on page 31 of our report, please? Anyone? No? Lovely, thank you. That just takes us on to the transition committee updates. Just wanted a quick whirlwind round the chairs, just to give us your initial feedback on how the first meetings have gone. Any, not, not in terms of the details of the discussions, but the more practical aspects of how they've run and how they've worked. I don't know if you would like to start, councillor Dale?
Thank you. Yeah, I think councillor Gilligan's our vice chair as well, I think ours went well. I think we, we formed a really good understanding right at the very beginning about why we were meeting and what, what we were trying to do. I think we decided in that meeting that we were going to form working groups focusing on key strands of the work programme that we were looking at. And we've also allowed an opportunity for feedback from all members so that we can see from everyone, so that everyone on that committee has a voice around what they think's working well, what's not working well. We've only had one meeting. I think, I, I know we've had some conversations about the speed of the, the work outside of those meetings, which is not really moving along quickly enough in, in our view. So we had said that we were going to set up some working groups, that's, that's kind of not happened yet. And I know it's only two weeks in, but our next meeting is in two weeks, so it's that kind of understanding around capacity to get the actual work programme working, ready, like, say we've only got five meetings to make this work, so just need to get things moving a bit quicker, I think. Thank you.
councillor Richards, can you do yours?
It is, it is me, and I will just start by saying that councillor Rivers, I think because of pressing time commitments, because she's now embarked on a PhD around youth violence and social cohesion, has decided to step down as chair, and councillor Peter Carbutt will be taking over from her. And I'd just like to say that I'm sure Peter's going to be fine, but working with Caltoon was a joy, so I just want to be able to say that. We have looked primarily at housing issues so far. We've talked about the housing repair system and the fact that it doesn't seem to be fit for purpose, and we're looking forward to receiving a, a report on the review that's to take place and how we can engage with that. I think we've thought about having a working group, which would include some tenants and other people to talk about whether what the proposals are for a better system are what they feel will also be useful to them. We wanted to look at housing in the round, and that the bit that often gets missed is the RSLs. So we wanted to look at how we work, how this council works with RSLs, so that there is, if you like, it's fairly seamless between having a council tenancy and having an RSL tenancy, and that the rules and things are all similar. Cladding, we wanted to put on just as a one off item, just to see what the progress is, because both in the private and public sector, it's been a huge issue in Sheffield. And I think the one mechanical thing we wanted to do was make sure that we have an item on every agenda with anything that's referred to us from a lack and vice versa, so that we make sure that we have proper links with all of the area committees. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if any of the three on our back row happened to be on either councillor Marufo or councillor Jones's committees? If you could give us any feedback.
I think Mary and I are both on transitional committee four, but that hasn't actually met yet. We, we sort of had, had 10 minutes of a meeting, then we waited half an hour and then we all went home.
It was all technical difficulties.
Oh, into the technical difficulties, the microphone's not working and nobody being able to shout loud enough.
Well, I mean, that, that's just a fact of life, unfortunately, but yeah, but if you have any comment you'd like to make, Alex, please do.
The comment is, these transitional committees were set up for us to explore some of the challenges we may find as we make decisions as committees. I didn't anticipate that one of those early lessons would be, make sure that if the internet goes down, your microphones still work. But it may be interesting to learn that today we had exactly the same problem, because as I understand it, someone played, played silly buggers with a internet box somewhere around the corner and the council's internet's still being repaired, but there is a clever doohickey in the corner up there through which we're currently organising ourselves over the airwaves instead. So, so we are-
Are you attracted to it?
We are, clever doohickey, I'm sorry to use such technical language. But yeah, that, due to smart, smart democratic services people learning quickly, we're, we're already trying to avoid that problem in future.
Thank you. Are we all happy then to just note those two recommendations about the progress or not so far? Thank you. And then the last item on the agenda is to note that we have the next meeting on the 30th of November, subject to something coming a little bit before. Perhaps, Alex? Okay, just doing recommendation one. Thank you. Okay. So that's the date of the next meeting? Go on, speak, go.
Sorry, Chair, apologies, and you may feel this is covered, I just might, might shoot, but there is a recommendation on this report asking for a written update to a future meeting from the transitional committees. Are you, are you content that that's agreed as well? Was that explicit? Yeah, great, okay.
Well, my, my one chair and my vice chair are delighted, the rest of them should have been here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. So, so the, so the date of the next meeting is the 30th of November. Thank you all for your attendance this afternoon, and very good afternoon. Thank you.